I call the meeting to order, Silver City Planning and Zoning Commission for Tuesday, May the 7th, 2024. If you'd be good enough to rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If we could possibly have a roll call.
Chairman Wheaton Smith?
Present.
Commissioner Middlestat? Commissioner Bayless?
Here.
Commissioner Treadway?
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, and I understand that Commissioner Middlestat has a reasonable excuse for not being here, so that doesn't count against anything. Next item on the agenda then is the approval of the agenda. I wonder if staff has any suggestions?
So we are needing to reschedule ZC 2401 to a special meeting, which is scheduled on May 24th at 5:00 PM here at the Grant County Administration offices. Yeah, so I think we may need to remove it from the agenda, if you would so.
We will do a vote. Do I have a motion to remove from the agenda tonight, public hearing number ZC 24-01?
I'll motion.
Second. With that, any discussion? Though all I can say is there was a reasonable cause behind it, and it's going to make things smoother. Hearing none, those, it's an agenda item. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that agenda item is now removed. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Anyone want to make a motion to approve them?
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Reactions or anything?
I had a, no, not about the minutes, I just had a question. I was absent for this meeting. I understand from the minutes that we have decided to kind of lay low until we find a consultant. Are there any actions that we're doing on this side?
We'll get to that in two places. One of them will be staff input, and the other one is discussion of the April meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. Hearing none, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor of approving the minutes of the April 18th meeting, please say aye.
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 Anyone objecting? Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Next item is community input, which is...
None of system.
That's a good word for it, yeah. Okay. Next item on the business, all business of which there is none. The next item is the public hearing ZC 24-01, which we have removed from the agenda. That is rescheduled to May the 24th in this room at 5:00 PM. Five, five, not six, yeah. So the next item on the list is new business, discussion of the, on the April 18th meeting, action items, and a decision of the next steps. And it occurred to me that we need to slow down gathering input. Why? And again, it's up to you guys. You're the commission, not me. Just because I say something doesn't mean that's the way it is. But, we have, just to give you an idea of the data we've got, there's a summary sheet here. We have a total of 122 comments, of which half came from public input, and the other half was stuff that I've been gathering from comments that commissioners have made since we've been looking at this, the comments that staff have made, other people that I've bumped into on the street. Very roughly, 61 comments from the public, 61 from stuff I've gathered. When we look at that, there are eight or nine issues that are relevant to the comprehensive plan. So those are things we can only recommend, because obviously, comprehensive plan is a document approved by the town. The land use code and the statute makes provisions to revise the comprehensive plan, so one doesn't have to go through a whole process for it. Land use code problems were up there, around about 45 of the comments related to the land use code itself. Four were stuff that the state legislator would have to handle, out of our bailiwick. But that doesn't mean to say that the town wouldn't talk to the legislators about it and all those good things. And then there were 61 that it says, "Community development or maybe planning and zoning", which probably means we will need to discuss those items to flesh them out. Thirteen items were high priority. And what is concerning me is we're going to have a consultant, and then we will have a get-together with the town council. And I think it's very important that before we gather more information, that we're in sync with the town council, and that they can guide us, if they wish, in different directions, or which items are less relevant. That's absolutely crucial, because guess what? Land use code, again, is legislative action, and so obviously, we need to be on board with that. The second reason is, we will, I'm sure, once the commission and the town council are in sync, I'm sure there's going to be public meetings. And it would be helpful if the public came in refreshed, rather than, well, we've been doing this for the last six months, blah, 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 blah. So that was the second reason for why I suggested that we should stop gathering any more, I mean, if more input comes in, obviously, it'll get added into the system, the data that we have. But what I'm suggesting is, we probably need to stop looking for more information. Which brings us to what's here, action items and decision on the next step. So the question is, we've got this document, which has got 120 odd items in it, and they're very short, brief items. What do you, I have some ideas, but I'm gonna shut up. What do you think we ought to do next with that? We've done the data gathering, we've done some analysis, so what do you all think the next step should be?
Are there hard copies of this document?
Uh, there can be.
Okay, or, I mean, you don't have to do all that, but...
I, I can...
You have enough going on, I just...
Since, since we're not going to be voting on it for a long time, I'll, I'll make sure that you get copies. What I'll do is give them to...
Or at least the 13 high priority.
13 high priority, I'll give them to community development, and then if you would be kind enough to email them out, then I won't get yelled at. That'd be good.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One is, is there a deadline that we are working towards with this process?
No, it reminds me of the, do you have shop at the co-op? There was a lovely article a couple of years ago, which says, "We are on schedule. Our schedule is somewhat flexible." And I gotta use that, because there isn't, because until we get a contractor on board who is excellent at code writing, we can't go to the next step with the council.
That's my second question. Is the code consultant required? Do you have to have certain require, you know, qualifications to write the code?
That's a determination that the administration and the council would make, and I wonder if there are any updates on that concept, Ms. Madam Director.
So we do have, we have been in communication with a consultant out of Albuquerque, so I believe, I spoke with the town manager, and he's wanting to move forward with them, but we haven't solidified a contract as of now, but what they presented with us, they kind of got a rough idea, they looked at our land use code, as well as the housing plan, and they can do them in tandem. So what happened last time was, the housing plan was updated before the land use code was, so the housing plan referenced standards from an old code. So now, since they will be able to work together, both of them will be updated at the same time, so we'll be able to kind of move forward with the most relevant information reflective of each other. And I, I do believe we, we want a consultant, because it is a lot of work, kind of going through, we don't have the manpower currently in community development to be able to draft the document ourselves, and it is beneficial to get like outside perspective, because they have, the ones that we, we've been speaking with, they've done other municipalities of similar population that have some of the same issues that we've been addressing, like affordability, you know, housing, mixed use, things of that nature. So that was one of the reasons why we thought that they were a very, you know, viable candidate for, for the position.
Thank you. A little bit on, on our existing land use code, it's got a lot of pages, very few pictures, so I have a tough time with that. But the real problem is, it is, yes, it's complex, but the trouble is, it's also complicated. And we've got, just my going through it alone, I came up with 40 issues of either inconsistencies or whatever. And the philosophy with the existing land use code seemed to be, let's regulate everything we can possibly think of, compared to what is really important, and how can discretion be built into it so that community development has a more practical job? For instance, some things are quantum jumps with square footage and things like that, as opposed to a continuum. I don't know what's best. This is the thing I like about this commission, is we've got an architect here, we have a GIS person here, someone who's been with other municipalities and understands PNC, we have Commissioner Middlestat, who's a civil engineer, and then my background, apart from federal, is having worked in several capacities with the town. A in public works, B, town clerk, and C on the council. So I think we've got a wonderful blend of people here, who can go through the land use code and see what you think about it. This is, see if you see the similar problems that I did. Some of them are simply typos or incorrect references, but does it have to be as complicated as it is?
I, I have another question, and that is in regards to the public input. Since I was previously a member of the public, I was there, so, but I'm concerned that that's all, public input there is, because it was from a very limited perspective. And so, my concern is, not with the slowing, but the potential absence of sufficient public input to make this a really robust land use and housing code based on the wide variety of constituencies that we have here. So the, the fact that there were only four or five of us that did give comments, we were loud mouths, so we gave a lot, and I agreed with them, because I gave some of them. But, as now commissioner, I want to make sure that we have as wide of a view and as wide of a commentary as possible, and wanting to make sure that we have a process that allows for that to happen as easily for as many people as possible.
I'll give, off to you, Madam Director.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Kennedy, so we will have public input meetings whenever the, the consultant gets on board, so we will be, they'll be more advertised, I guess, not just with the Planning and Zoning Commission, which is legally advertised with legal notices and, and things of that nature, but also, it would be through the council, so there, you know, a platform would also be a second, well, you know, the first and Planning and Zoning Commission secondary, so we would be opening up to a wider audience to, you know, offer that opportunity for everybody to get buy-in to the, to the planning process.
And to add to that, I will send out the document to the director, who will then send it to you. When you do, look at the first few items. It's the first objective and methods, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, et cetera, and what they say is that we need input, not from just the central part of each district, but the peripheries. We need input from architects, so that's good. We need input from real estate people. Why? Because they know the rental market, some of them. They know it from a landlord perspective, as well as a tenant perspective. We need it from quite a diverse group. You're 100% right, and the best way to have a land use code that's useless is not to have that input.
And to follow up with that, are the only opportunities for public input at these open meetings? Or can we, as commissioners, go and interview members of the public to get input?
Would you, I'll give you an answer after, Madam Director.
Once, once kind of the, the planning process begins, I think it would be best to kind of guide them to the public meetings, so then their, the town council, as well as Planning and Zoning Commission, will be able to hear what these people have to say firsthand, and I think that's really beneficial. But, community development is always open to, you know, public input, whenever it comes to certain, you know, regulations that we have to enforce. But I think since this document will be so long-running, I think it's very important for the, you know, any person that has any qualms or, or positives, negatives, anything to say, say it in front of the people who will be passing the legislation, and the people who are engaged in, you know, enforcing that. So that's just my two cents.
And let me add on that. These will be discussions, they, they aren't public hearings, as far as we're concerned. Legislative hearings are what council does a lot of, and legislative hearings don't have the ex parte issue that quasi judicial functions do. So what I'm hoping is that we will, when we work with the town council, work out what is most helpful to the council in this, and if they would like us to go out and meet people, then we would. But I would definitely let them make that decision. The Planning and Zoning Commission is actually two commissions. The first one is a planning and plating commission, and the second one is a board of adjustment or a board of appeals. When you're functioning as a planning and plating commission, there's no decisions come out of that. We may produce a document, but that's it. So if the council is okay and accepts the fact that that wouldn't be ex parte issues, then the answer is yes. But I would leave that decision entirely up to the council. In looking at other planning commissions, they do actually have constituencies. We don't, because 99% of what we do are adjudicatory hearings. So yes, I'm sure there's going to be open houses, and I'm sure that there will be public hearings, and so on and so forth. Go on, make sure the council is, doesn't feel in any way that we're treading on their toes.
Okay. I would hope that the consultant, whomever that may end up being, would have ideas about how to make this as wide-ranging as possible, and as, to draw in as many people as possible. It seems like that should be a concern, if this person has worked in other jurisdictions, it seems like that should be a very, a top-notch, a top priority issue, is that, what are the people out there thinking? Now, I got a goofy question. The city, the city council has approved the hiring of a consultant, and they made this a budget item, or?
So if I remember correctly, the town council has been wanting to update the land use code for the past about two or three years, I believe, because it is, it's supposed to be updated every 10 years, and it's from 2010, and so, we're kind of behind. So they, they've been very eager to get a consultant, and unfortunately, my position has had a lot of turnover in the last four years, so there hasn't really been an opportunity to have community development be kind of the guiding force in getting POs and, you know, reaching out to consultants and things of that nature. But now, we, you know, I've been in this position for almost two years, so I feel that it is a good time to start moving forward, and the council has been eager to get it updated, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission, so I think they're fully behind any sort of update that we will be doing, as, you know, with their involvement. And of course, they'll have their stamp of approval on it after we've gone through all of the paces and everything.
So the consultant will probably meet with the council? I mean...
Absolutely.
Good.
One other question. When I met with Alex Brown, he told me that he had charged council members Prince and Snyder with running this, this show, if you will, in terms of planning and zoning. Is that correct? That's what he told me, and I was just wondering if it's all the council, or if there's those, those two?
Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So Commissioner Snyder, or Councilman Snyder and Councilman Prince have been in communication with me about updating the housing plan, and so, the council as a whole wants to update the land use code, but we haven't been able to get a consultant. So that kind of has stagnated, and then they, they took, you know, an initiative to start updating the housing plan, and so, that was some of the conversations that I've had with them recently, was regarding the housing plan. We were meeting twice a month for the last, I believe, three months about it, and then this particular consultant that we've been talking with can do those, like I mentioned earlier, in tandem. So we've been collecting information from the old housing plan with Councilor Prince and Councilor Snyder.
I feel like the, the transfer student that's new in school, I need to ask all the questions on where like lunchroom is and that sort of thing.
Important questions. The, I've met with two, correction, three of the councillors, and talked about these things, and I haven't found anyone who disagrees with A, the need, and B, with some of the ideas that we may come up with and often. There's, everyone is currently on the same page. I want to make sure that we don't get too much additional public input now, in case we diverge, because right now, we're going in the right direction. So that's, that's one of the reasons I suggest we focus on the next phase. We've got the data, and we've done some preliminary analysis, so what are we going to do next? One of the councillors, Councilor Snyder, was on the commission, which is, I think, very helpful, and I, I was very pleased that Councilor Prince came to the last meeting. I think that's a very positive sign, and he had input to offer. So I want to keep everything with all of us on board in the right direction, and nobody feeling that we're stepping out of line.
So can we develop those, those points that you mentioned any further at this point? Or, or, or are we still gonna wait till the land use, land use consulting shows?
That, that's why I said decision on the next steps. The answer is, I think we still have quite a lot of work to do. Why? Because when you look at that document, and I know some of you have got pieces of it, it's very abbreviated. Well, if we're going to give anything that's helpful to the council, or to the consultant, or to both, it needs to be not abbreviated, but in simple terms, explaining what the problem is, and what are some of the suggested solutions might be. So I, in other words, I would recommend that the next steps are that we do that, but it's up to you to decide if you think that's the best approach. You seem to be thinking along the same lines.
Yeah, I mean, I just remember looking at it, and it was just like a single sentence on something quite big, and certain things I know about, other things I don't. And, and it, I'm not sure if it's in a logical order yet, it seems like a semi-logical order, but there might be another piece of logic that we might want to apply, like the land use code. You know, something, I'm thinking, I always think in terms of a grant proposal, that's when I'm trying to solve a problem, I, that's, I've done a lot of grant writing, and so, I think, okay, first, what is the problem? Okay, what's the need? You know, what's the problem? What are the solutions? What are our time, what's our timeline? Who's, who are the clients that we're serving here to make sure that we get the input? And making sure that our goals, objectives, and our, our means of evaluation are correct. I think those apply to a project like this, too. That's how I kind of begin to think of something like this, I'm like, if I'm gonna have a comprehensible document to read at the end of the, the process, I know it's not gonna be the new land use code, but it might be thoughts towards a new land use code, you know, a white paper of some kind, that might help us to understand what we're doing.
Well, I'm very glad you mentioned that, because right now, I've been doing a lot of the writing, and I'm not really, my, much of my life has been as an hour list rather than other things, so I'm good at getting data and analyzing it, but I'm not a writer who can simplify things and make them readily understandable. So I imagine, as part of the decision on the next steps, is we probably need to, after we've looked at it, talk about it as an agenda item on one of the next two meetings that we've got, and say, who would like to do what with it? What do you, each of you, think your skills can do to improve things? And maybe there's some things that Commissioner Bayless say, hey, I like these, and that's something I can do. And Commissioner Kennedy, the same thing, Commissioner Treadway, Commissioner Middlestat, and work out who can refine the language, and then you go do it on your own, then we meet again, and how do we congeal that? To do that, we probably need to have a standard of how we write paragraphs and things like that. And so that's what we, we would do at the next meeting, where we talk about this. So we wouldn't be looking, we'd be looking at purely internal business of how we'll do things. If that works for you, what do you think? Commissioner Treadway?
I like that, that idea of getting together and dividing the work that way, it's not all on one person.
I'm all for that.
I, I also think that maybe we can have a dedicated meeting, or something where we can spend a good amount of time, kind of brainstorming amongst ourselves a little bit to flesh things out, in terms of, instead of just sending somebody away to write it, bash things around a bit first, to kind of get, you know, sub ideas slightly more clarified, and then, and then go ahead and writing it, knowing that it can always be edited. And I've done a lot of writing, a lot of editing, so I know that the most important thing is to get it down on the paper.
Yeah.
In whatever yucky way that it needs to be, and you can always go and fix it. And so that's the main thing, is, is to make sure that, and that was part of my question of like, making sure that there's enough public input, it's like, if it's every 10 years, gosh, we need to make sure that it's a good job, and that means, the more information, the better, the final result. And so that's kind of, as I'm getting up to speed with this process, and I haven't done a land use code before, but I have written big projects and know how they need to be handled, to make sure things, as you say, stay consistent within the complexity. We want to take out the complication, the complexity may need to stay. If we can make it less complex, I'm all for simple, whatever possible. I'm thinking that our process that can help us to do that as easily as possible, and so we don't have redundancies amongst ourselves as well, will be helpful for sanity, I think, in terms of actually producing something that can not only be useful, but we can do it within our, our capacity that we have.
Yes. With that, that's kind of suggesting that we might want to schedule, it'd be a special meeting, where it was a morning and a break for lunch and an afternoon, because the lunchtime gives you a chance to digest.
I think, I think an extended thing, while, not like I don't have anything else to do, it, I think it demands it, frankly. I mean, we need time to spread out on some of these issues, and I just went to a, a board retreat for... And I just went to a a board retreat for the Art Association. And having, you know, four hours to just really chunk through some stuff was super helpful because if you just stop, you spend half the time catching up to where you were last time. So some, at least one thing like that would be, I think, really would get us light years ahead.
Yes, that's good.
Yeah, well, Stephen King has said that good writing is actually rewriting. So to take those nuggets that we have now and decide which ones need to be expanded, maybe some simplified, like Houston has no land use code at all, right? Yeah, so uh I I I like the idea of putting some things together, distilling it, expanding it where we need to, and that would be a great uh springboard for our consultant.
Yes, in in other words, it's a two-step event. One is us getting a document ready for the consultant. And then the next step will be how much of that gets folded into the the joint meetings that we have. So I would suggest that we do work out, uh and obviously, the best place, by the way, is the City Hall Annex conference room. But how does that sound? Two or three hours in the morning, lunch, two or three hours in the afternoon?
That's a little difficult for me. I work Monday through Saturday during the day. So um I could make that work. I would just have to be notified a couple of weeks in advance. My schedule is two, three weeks out.
And uh the Community Development Director is very good at wrestling up people.
And Chairman, if I may, um maybe something like half an hour before a break for like thirty minutes and then another hour and a half or something, you know, hour and a half, an hour and a half for like a cumulative of maybe like three to four hours, just because it's also my office hours time. Um if it's during the day.
I think that's reasonable.
So that's just my two cents.
So it'd be daytime and one and a half to two hours in the morning with a break, lunch, same thing in the afternoon, and plenty of advanced morning so that those who of us who are not retired and who are working hard and helping pay into social security. Can uh schedule stuff. I like that idea. I think that's what, how does that work for you, Commissioner Bayless?
Sounds like a wonderful idea. Bouncing a lot of ideas around is a good thing. I guess the first order of business would be, you said that document was sort of available.
Yeah.
Probably the thing to do would be to get that document into everybody's cortex as soon as possible. So people can start looking at it, mulling it, rethinking it, sleeping on it, all those things. It's help help that all that 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 en- enhance that process.
I I will email the document to our director. It's, by the way, I did change the title on it. Instead of saying affordability in the context of the land use code, I've called it affordability, correction, affordable, beneficial, efficient.
Yes, I like it.
Issues with the land use code. Because those are really the three things that seem to be a theme that that we've got. Commissioner Kennedy, you you mentioned models. One of the things in that document is, I don't mind what problem-solving models we have, but the one that we did have in there, we did actually have one, which is called daddy, which is first of all, define the problem, then analyze it for critical causes and factors, then dialogue around those causes to come up with a minimum of three variations for each issue because that causes more creative thinking. Then implement it on paper and do a paper walkthrough and then evaluate. So that's the model that we did have in there. And I I think that seems pretty close to what you were saying.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Um I had a question. The, does the housing code reside within the land use code or is it a separate code entirely?
We have, the land use code covers a lot of things, but there are things that are separate, uh, and director.
Chairman, if I may, the housing plan is, the Housing and Strategic Plan. So that was done, I believe, early in like September of two thousand and ten. So it was kind of an analysis of the town's housing stock, you know, area median income, how zoning relates to those things. I I have a copy and it's also available on the town website. If you would like, I can print it up for you. But it um it has suggestions in the housing plan for how the land use code can benefit housing. So if that makes any sense. But um so it took into consideration previous land use code and some of the things that stifle housing or things of that nature within it. And then what can be done to benefit more housing in the town. So it it's act- it's a really good read. It's very comprehensive. So I can get that for you if you would like.
A comprehensive plan, also called a master plan, doesn't have to be one document. It can be split up. So that's where that fits in, the housing plan. Also, parts of the comprehensive plan exist in some municipalities' land use code. So it can, it can be multiple sources.
Okay.
Good question.
Good. I like the way it's gelling.
I I think you you've all come up with a very good thing. So I'm gonna email the document to you tomorrow and then go through it and think about which pieces, if any, appeal to you so that when we have our morning-afternoon next meeting, there'd be a special meeting at the City Hall Annex consuming that conference room. Will be more productive. You are the commissioner, not me.
Well, thank you.
I need your inputs.
Taking time tonight to get that out to us, I appreciate it.
If if I were to get a printed-out copy, how how long is that? I mean, is it gonna be like that stack of paper or is it, how 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 long of a document are we talking about?
Chairman, if I may, the housing plan? Oh, I believe it's like a hundred and fourteen pages. I think that's front to back.
Okay. And the land use plan?
The land use code, I think, is probably around three hundred. No, so it's like one eighty-six front and back.
The land, yeah, the land use code is on the town's website. And you can do searches. I give you a caution on the searches. You have to be careful because sometimes the the search engine decides to take you off to a totally different state and county.
Oh.
And so uh one needs to be explicit. What I can do, I downloaded the whole thing and put it in my usual disorganized format. Uh so I will email that one out, it's a hundred and eighty-two pages. And the one thing that I have put into it, which you don't have on the town's website, is an index of keywords. So you can easily find where something is without having to do a search. And also cross-reference on sections of the land use code. So where is this section used elsewhere? So I will send out uh that version as well. Which also brings me to a point. When the land use code gets updated, a lot of references in our handbook are going to change. So someone is going to be rather busy. In preparation for that, this is the very book you have already got. However, I've used sections that begin in hundred-page increments to make it much easier to find stuff. So there'll be a section, some stuff will be in the one-hundred series. The next topic will be in the two-hundred series. And I've got blank pages left intentionally to make it very easy to pull stuff out and to put stuff in. So this is to get us going in the right direction.
Is is this the same thing that you gave me the other day?
Yes. Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, let me give that.
That's probably to.
Yes, to Commissioner Mittelstadt.
Okay.
I was wanting to give that to her. So I will see she gets that. There's absolutely no changes to the one that you already have. What other thoughts?
Have you done any research on other towns' land use codes and their process of updating them? Especially ones that are trying to do something innovative or exciting or or outside the box in terms of bringing new ideas to a town?
Yes. One of the things that I've done, and I probably need to ship that document out, too. And if anyone wants to take over any of these documents, uh feel free to say, wow, that's good. I I've got a document called Best Practices. And I've gone through eighteen other municipalities in New Mexico to see what do they do really well and what do they do that's rather, has opportunities for improvement, shall we say. And out of that, I've got a page or two of short, one-line best practices. One of the things that Commissioner Bayless mentioned was Houston has no zoning except they have other constraints, but they have no zoning. One of those eighteen in New Mexico has no zoning except around an airport, for example. Issues that um, some very interesting ideas of how they process things a little differently to us. For example, a variance for us means seven findings that must be found. Condition we use, four findings that must be found. And those are the ones that we can approve, subject to appeal if needed to the town council. So that's where the checks and balances are. The zone change, we make a decision, but it's not a final decision. It's a decision to recommend to the town council to either go ahead with the zone change or not. And it's up to them. Why? Because in our town, uh a an amendment to the zoning map is by ordinance. It's a legislative action. I might add, I found, I think it's two municipalities that do that in a different way. Personally, I prefer the way that we have because it is, I think, you'd need to have those who are elected make such that kind of a decision because that's very major. So the meeting we have on the twenty-fourth, if whatever the outcome is, it is goes to the council. It isn't an appeal, it automatically goes to the council, whatever is we come up with.
How about outside of New Mexico?
I have done some on a couple of places. One of them was a town with which I think you are rather familiar. In Arizona, I've looked at some in Michigan, New York, New Jersey, Florida, and California and Colorado. Uh but not in detail. The ones that I've looked at in detail were purely focusing on how P and Z is involved. So I've got their entire code. The the municipal league does have a sub-chapter for planning and zoning commissions. And it's not expensive to join it. But I'm trying to find out what the benefits is right now because they don't have any points of contact that one can call for getting ideas.
I mean, I know that places are different than here, but I basically want to find the best small-town code in America and then copy what's relevant and then innovate the rest, basically, you know, or the top five. And then see, the ones that are relevant to us, to our situation, you know, a place that has maybe resource extraction and the arts, you know, as in tandem or ranching and and you know, something has a similar vibe as us, even outside of the country, you know. You know, one of the best earth-building codes, for example, is out of New Zealand. And so I'm trying, it's like, if it's every ten years, let's like get as much as possible, that's good, in my view. And if there's somebody who's already done it well, shoot, let's just copy it. That's my feeling. And so I think it's identifying in those things. And that's something I'm interested in, so I'm I'm certainly gonna.
I encourage you to go off and do the research because I went off and did the research on these eighteen in in New Mexico. So do.
Okay.
Anyone, please feel more than free to do your own research. I'm very partial to what I've seen in Europe, which is basically what we have downtown. Downtown, the historic district, in Europe, a lot of stuff is mixed-use. And I'm personally, I'm very much in favor of mixed-use. I think uh Australia, I think, well, Sydney, where I've spent a bit of time, similarly. The history of zoning was not always very kind to various sections of the population. And it was, there were some very good things in it. It goes back to nineteen twelve, four through nineteen twenty-eight. And there are some very good things in there, but it's also designed to be, literally, to people need to have either horse and buggies or motor vehicles. It's not designed for walkability. Downtown is walkable, but nowhere else is. We don't have mixed-use. And with mixed-use, you have the opportunity for corner candy stores and things like that. I think you've all got excellent points.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to stealing good ideas from anybody who has them. And uh I was reading this book, The Happy City, and it talks about Bogota. And it talks about, it's more the softer side, not the the black-letter law of the zoning plan. And I I totally understood, you know, the history of the zoning in that nobody wants to live next door to a slaughterhouse or a smelter. Okay? And I totally understand that. But the softer side, in the in the Happy City, they talk about bicycles, bicycles, and street fairs. And those things engender community sense. And the city even pays for street fairs. They pay for a policeman to be at your straight street fair. If you have a lot of Irish people on your street, the city pays for it. They help, they help you put up the barricades. They they buy a keg, they buy a bouncy house for the kids to jump in. They and they and they pay for a policeman to be there. And the people that don't get along during the rest of the year, you know, the guy that doesn't want you to park in front of his house, even though it's a public street, you have a beer with him and maybe, maybe that builds community. So simple things like that, uh I'm not opposed to stealing them and and seeing how they can be integrated into what we do here.
There was a book that was published some years ago called Superbia, which was filled with these sorts of soft ideas that you you're mentioning. Which I agree. I mean, I think it's really interesting living downtown and seeing when the town gets activated and those things that do activate it, like the the farmer's market, for example, and the maker's market and First Fridays, you know, things like that. And I like the the idea of the block party, you know, where it's not just downtown, but a neighborhood can kind of create its own neighborhood connection, which I think, to me, is the building block of community, is neighborhood. And if we fix it at the neighborhood scale and do things at the neighborhood scale, that's going to grow things. And so I I'm totally with you with those sorts of ideas that are friendly and some and positive. You know, something that's like people can get on board with, like a bouncy house. Yeah, all right.
Kids would love it, yeah.
And so I I I I agree that, especially if if proposing anything that's changed or something like that, it has to be in a friendly way. Other, I I mean, I'm just seeing, I was here at one of the the city council, I went to the city council meeting the other day when I got and man, this stuff gets contentious if you don't just work it out right. And so I'm I'm seeing the the importance of doing so now that my brief, my brief exposure to small-town government is like, okay.
I think we have a great building block, just something as simple and as mundane. People here take it for granted, but something as simple as the bike, the bike race.
Yeah.
There's a whole nucleus, it's like an anthill, of all of these volunteers that make that work. All those people that guard the intersections and wave the flags. There's a whole gang of those people. And I can think of other towns, they wouldn't be able to pull together a group like that to volunteer and make that all all congeal. No way. Uh so I I that's something great to build on, even if it's like reunions of the bike, of the bike volunteers. Once a month, they have a big reunion and the and the city buys, gets them a bouncy house. But it it is such a great nucleus to build upon. It's 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 very encouraging.
One of the things in, since we last looked at our affordable, beneficial, and efficient land use code suggestions, there's two of them that. There's two of them that came to mind. One of them is in our comprehensive plan. It doesn't talk very much about preservation of value in neighborhoods. And neighborhoods, it mentions the word neighborhoods plenty of times, but I don't see any beef behind it at all. And when you are spread out and we don't have rapid development, it'd take a very long time for some things to actually happen. But I love the street party ideas. The other thing I was going to say, two other things. One of them, yes, a hundred and twenty-two suggestions. Some of those are quite obviously duplicates. And some of them are really unrelated to what the town can do. So this lot will get whittled down very quickly, I'm sure, between now and when we have our day meeting. The other thing that I've done, and I've emailed the reporter who did it, but there are a couple of places who've done serious research into what didn't work with some of these suggestions. And the reporter I've emailed back and forth a couple of times is very willing to offer some suggestions and things like that. Best practices are good, but worst practices are also very important.
Look for mistakes.
Yeah.
Look for mistakes.
Yes, please.
We all should do that, that's for sure.
It seems as if we've congealed it down to, I'm going to email the affordable, beneficial, and efficient document to the director. I will also email the single document, which is land use code, which has those indexes in it. And the director will work out when there is availability in the conference room and then probably work out who will be able... Because we want to get all of our commissioners available. Each of you bring something very valuable to the table. And I've said several times, you are far more qualified than me. I'm the least qualified person to be up here. So, does that sound like a plan?
Yes.
Does that work for community development? Any other issues on discussion at the April eighteenth meeting and decisions on the next steps?
I have to say, I'm very encouraged by having somebody sitting in your chair who's very proactive. Other places I've seen, people just kind of sat back and waited for something to happen. And usually, the things that happen weren't for the best. So to be proactive, I think we can go wrong. Because if this is something that's done once every ten years or once every fifteen, that calls for a proactive stance and a thoughtful and well-coordinated attack plan. And I think you've got one in line here.
Well, thank you to all of us. And also, I think the fact that one of the two people who's been working on the housing issue is, has been on planning and zoning for a while. And as I say, I've met with now three of the councillors. Not one of them has an issue with it's got to be improved. So I just want to make sure we don't do anything that the council thinks we're stepping on their toes. They have the legislative side. But we've got some resources here that are pretty amazing. Okay, any other discussions on that topic? Hearing done. Next item is reports from staff.
So we do have the special meeting scheduled for May twenty-fourth here at 5:00 PM. It is a Friday. And then we have a regularly scheduled meeting on June fourth or fifth, I believe, which we noticed in the paper. So we have another public hearing that will be happening on that meeting day as well. So we have a few cases coming up, so it'll be fun.
Reports from commissioners. Commissioner Tredway.
Sure, I would like to just let everyone know that I am on summer vacation right now. So I'll be able to do these meetings and a little bit more work on my part. And yeah, so I won't have any conflicts with the meeting in a couple of weeks, just with work. So if you just let me know as soon as possible, I can get on that and then I can start writing stuff that I find is in my ballpark for the topics that we've discussed for the housing.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Well, my show went well today. That's always good. And I think I mentioned...
These more arts.
Yes. I think I mentioned to you guys that I had a piece of art that sold to the state of New Mexico through their one percent in the arts. So I'm getting my work out there. But I'm on summer vacation too. I just had finals on Monday last. And man, it's tough being a student at this age. Those brain cells don't work as well as they used to, man. And so, and those young whippersnappers, they're smart. So I'm, but it was good. I'm, it's part of my Blue Zone strategy to stay young is to learn new things. And so that's my goal. GIS, oh man, I'm not sure. That's it.
Steve Bellas.
Yeah, I just had a question, it's kind of a goofy one, but if someone, like here we have ZC twenty-four oh one, if someone makes an application in this kind of vein, is there a fee for that?
Yes, so there's a fee associated with all of the applications that go through planning and zoning. The zone change is a $250 fee because it has two administrative hearings. Conditional use permit, I believe, is $75. A variance, I think, is $75 as well. And those are the ones that I know off the top of my head.
Just, I was just curious. Because we could double that fee and then we could have more block parties.
Yes, well, that's a happy thought.
After all, it's neighbors.
Aspirations. Okay, next item is, oh, me. Any news on the purchase order for training?
I have it waiting to be submitted. So I haven't submitted it yet to get its purchase order number. But it has, the funds have been approved by the town manager. So it's just sort of an administrative paper pushing point at this stage. But I will get it submitted by the end of the week.
And that purchase order is for an organization which is attached to the Michigan State University. And there's a base course that I've done, which I like. It's a ten-hour course. It's in segments. And they do a good job of covering different states. But they also included in that, you will be able to look at all the other courses. They have a number of two-hour courses, a number of one-hour. And you might think, oh, yeah, right, what can I gain in one or two hours? The, all of the instructors, almost all of the instructors are very active in the field. So they have someone who's an expert on comprehensive plans. They have an attorney who does some stuff, and so on and so forth. Again, it's generic, but it's sufficient to give some very good insights. And I'm doing one right now on some of the more modern ideas of zoning, which to me, look almost exactly like what we had a hundred years ago, well, a hundred and twenty years ago, namely downtown towns. That has a lot in common. But they break these things out. It's, they're good courses and you do them at your own leisure. And I think they're very well worthwhile.
What's the sponsoring organization for that?
The, it's an organization called Planetism. Planet Citizen is the contraction. And Michigan State University has involvement with this. It isn't their course, Planetism deals with it. And I personally paid for it myself, and I'm very glad I did. It has very, it is well worth it. And they have tests after each section, or crinching after each course.
And the subject matter is?
Almost anything to do with planning and zoning and comprehensive plans, you name it, constitutional issues, boards of adjustment issues they face. And again, it's very generic. So you'll find that they will be specific about, for example, Michigan, New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Florida, et cetera. But it gives you a very good flavor for what other states do and how they do it and what doesn't work. And our policies in New Mexico are a little different to some of them. But I didn't have any difficulty realizing that. So it covers the whole gamut of what we're doing, Planetism. Some of their stuff is available for free on YouTube, but it's fragmented. Whereas here, you've got the course and you go through and it keeps track of what you're doing and so on and so forth. One other item in my reports from the commission. I mentioned that I enjoy being the chair. I would be okay with being the chair next year. I would also be equally okay if you wanted someone as such a pain in the rear as me. But I'm not only going to do it for a maximum of two years. I want mobility, I want mobility in the commission. Why? Because when someone else takes over, it's fresh blood. And I very much want us to be an organization where there is movement and you are actively involved. And that brings up another point, which is, I had suggested a while back that, and it's up to you if you think it's a good idea. If you do, we'll do it. And if you don't, we won't. But people get nervous of sitting in this chair and banging a hammer around the place. And a way of getting people more experienced in it is to do some role plays. It's up to you whether we do or whether we don't. I would suggest that we come up with some dummy cases, a zone change, a variance, a conditional use permit. And the facts and locations would be different, but it would be something to give everyone a chance of actually running the meeting for two reasons. A, it may be that I'm not available sometime and the vice-chair may not be. And under section fifty-eight of Robert's Rules of Order, you can appoint a president for the meeting. So I'd like you to do that. You don't have to, I'm just offering it. This is another reason. If each of you has, can go through the role play and see what it's like, it's going to, I think, probably help when we have the real zone changes and variances and things because it's a different perspective. Your job when you're chairing the meeting is to keep us legal, keep us on track, and manage outbursts. We had one on a variance last year, for example. Not in our commission, I might add, it was an outburst from someone else. But I think it'd be very good. But it's up to you. So why don't you, when you get a chance, let Jackie know what you think, correction, the community development director. And if you think it's a good idea, then we can do that with, again, a special meeting. It's up to you.
Sounds like a good idea to me. The more skills folks here have, the better off we all are.
I had a question, is a quorum three?
Yes. You bring up an interesting point. For us, it's defined as three. One organization that I did some research on a couple of years ago, the language for the quorum was a majority of members, not a majority of positions. Ours is positions. We have five positions and it's three. If there's four of us only available, it's still three. If there's three of us, that's a quorum. If there's two, we can't do it. But ours is based on positions. Any further comments from anyone? I take it that the role play is a good idea?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just know that we have another special meeting already and so I just don't want to over...
We are going to do that. Yeah, no, we're going to avoid having too many of them.
Okay. But maybe, could we do it during a regular meeting?
Yes. What we might find is that on our regular meeting date, we don't have a hearing. And we'll know about that in time to set up the role plays.
Okay.
I agree with you. And what you'll find, for instance, in January, we had a case which was a variance. February, we didn't. So we made use of those regular meetings. So that's the plan. Where possible, let's use a regular meeting that doesn't have hearings attached to it. Okay, how has this overall meeting gone? Feedback, Commissioner Tredway.
It's gone well. Yeah, I like the steps we've made. And I look forward to getting the next special meeting that I can attend. But yeah, I enjoyed this one. And I think that it's going to be exciting to move forward with the next steps for the housing situation and new land code.
So the one-day meeting, morning, afternoon, things like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Good. Commissioner Kennedy.
Well, certainly, this is the best meeting of its type that I've been to, but given that it's the first one. I'm very pleased to be here, though, and was very... I was a bit nervous about doing this, you know, because it's new to me. But it's been something I've been interested in a long time. And when I attended the public meeting here and I had a chance to see all you guys, it made me feel like, okay, I think I could work with this group of people. Because that's, you know, we have the technology. It's always the pesky people that are the problem, you know? And so in these circumstances too, because I knew that I was too short to not, to otherwise work with people that you don't like. So I was happy to feel welcome and I'm feeling good so far. I mean, I was like, I'm not going to have to do anything, you know? I'm going to blow out Robert's Rules of Order or something. And so to have the friendly but rigorous atmosphere that's here has been very good for me. So thank you.
Commissioner Bellas.
I've said this before, but in a lot of meetings, there's a lot more said than is done, okay? But thanks for the impetus that you put behind things there, Mr. Simon. We're getting a lot done. And we're putting things together. I'm glad you mentioned the idea of deadlines. But we're putting things together in a focused fashion to get things poised and ready for our consultant and then onward and upward.
I'm very happy with what we did today. I wasn't sure what the outcome was going to be. I will point out that I worked on a very major product in the federal government. And I was in on the ground floor of that. And we had very rigorous business process reengineering models. We use PQMI, for instance, from AT&amp;T. And we use SADLabs for risk management. And so when I say I'm the least qualified here, I've got other skills perhaps that I hope will make us or keep us moving positively. With that, no other comments, questions, anything from staff? In which case, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We are now adjourned.